Before we call this meeting to order, I'm going to read this Governor's Executive Order. On March the 13th, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16th, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued governmental operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct today's board meeting as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Four trustees will participate in person for this meeting. Mr. Kenneth Barr, Mr. William Greenhill, Mr. Leonard Hornsby, and Ms. Jeanne de Kine, Dr. Gwendolyn Morrison, Ms. Shannon Wood, and myself, Theresa Yalla, will participate via video conference or telephonically. So we'll go ahead now and call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees on August 5th, 2021, to order. Do we have any special comments or any public comments or special presentations, Mr. Gates?
No, Ms. Yalla, we have none.
Hearing none, I think we'll go ahead and proceed. Before I turn over to the Chancellor, I just wanted to make sure that I welcomed everyone. And just let me begin by thanking the Chancellor, the staff, and the Board as well, all the Board members, for your strong collaboration over this past year and in helping to steward the resources that were available to us this past year. As we prepare for the coming year, this special meeting is for each of us to have a better understanding and seek more clearly and understand the resources that are necessary for this college to continue to serve this community effectively. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your questions and your feedback, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to the Chancellor.
The order of the agenda, if you will, is to overview the funds that comprise our budget and the budget process, as well as the priorities of the institution, a summary of the projected revenue to date, knowing that that will adjust, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and what we're focusing on as it relates to expenditures this coming year, and a little item on the tax levy process, and then we'll move on to some questions that you may have. So specifically, the funds that comprise our budget are a few. And one is the Fund 10, which we refer to as Maintenance in Operation. And that really is the bulk of the funding for the institution that come from our government as well as tuition resources and allow us to operate. Fund 20 is an auxiliary enterprise budget, and those are non-governmental revenues. And typically, the areas in which they are generated from, like bookstore and vending, are the same areas in which those expenses are dedicated to, as well as special student support services to promote student success. The Fund 40 is also referred to as pay-as-you-go. You'll reference that, is that we have traditionally transferred funds from Fund 10, our Maintenance in Operation, to dedicated capital improvements and captured them under a Fund 40 account and paid for those capital improvements, if you will, as cash. And we capitalize those and depreciate those over the remaining useful life of that asset. So that is an activity that we have traditionally engaged in and will continue to do so. Fund 50 is our debt services fund that came alive this past year when we issued bonds, well, June ago. And that is really to receive the interest in the sinking fund portion of the property tax dedicated specifically for the bond debt paid quarterly. Fund 90 represents the actual bond proceeds being spent, if you will, within our $825 million bond program. And just like is the pay-as-you-go, we identify those projects and the appropriate size of those and such, and how they'll finance them through the bond. And those expenditures usually hit multiple operating years, if you will, over a period of time, and we capitalize those and depreciate those over the useful life of that asset as well. So those are our primary sources of funding, if you will, and how we capture those. Let me move to now the budget process and the priorities as they have been identified this past year. Our process really engages two themes, if you will, one of which is we undergo an annual process, usually beginning in the February-March timeframe, to begin collecting requests to solicit needs for funding. And what we're talking about, big things, if you will. And the departments submit those, those are vetted through different levels of the organization, the cabinet making a recommendation finally, and we call those the Significant New Funding Request, or SNIFers, if you will. And we do have 22 of those this year, and I will detail those in a bit. Second, somewhat overlapping, but significant in that we call it out, and that is the 3GAP work. This work is now coming to the point of recommendations, and those recommendations will result in the need for resources, whether they be people, space, technology, equipment. And so this is an ongoing process. Yes, we adopt a budget for September 1, but throughout the year, we don't wait for the next year in order to do things as they come up through the integrated planning process throughout the year. So we try to be very dynamic and address items as they come up throughout the entire year. And it really helps, you know, support the systematic change within the institution that we're able to make these adjustments on the go. So these are the two ways in which, the main ways in which we feed the determination of what our, the process is to get at, then what are our priorities. From a thematic standpoint, what we've looked at this year as the priorities are around employee pay raise and then ongoing priorities that we have, and I'll delineate those in a bit, under advancing the academic programs, advancing learning support, college experience, as well as the capital improvements, and then there are some other things, and then also certainly inclusive of debt service. So as we looked at this year's budget, these are the priority themes, if you will, to address those. So as we get to those, we will talk first about the summary of projected revenue. I want to spend just a little bit of time on this, and this is as updated as earlier this afternoon. Our state appropriation obviously comes from appropriation from the legislature. The biennial budget does award us, if you will, $58,943,344. And as you can see, that's over a $2 million increase each year of the biennial. The maintenance tax is very fluid, and that is, again, updated just earlier today and projected today, where our maintenance tax will be at $263 million, well, over $263 million, for an increase of approaching $17 million. So, you know, that increase, if you will, in tax revenue, that's really looking at the same current tax rate that we have, the .13071. And it's based upon the certified rolls, right now assuming, you know, 70% of the values that was determined by the Appraisal Review Board, and a 96% collection rate. So I know those are a lot of numbers, but the fact is, this is a very conservative number. We will be receiving the no-new-tax-rate calculation from the tax assessor Saturday. And once that's signed, we'll know that that's good for us for the next year. We, again, are not showing, we're showing a flat rate tax revenue. So it's very, very identical to last year. We intend to offer up to you the same tax rate, and we will know what that no-new-tax-rate is on Saturday and be able to present that to you next week. So we had factored in, obviously, the debt service as part of this as well. So the bottom line is, and we will bring this back in a summary way next week, we are being very good stewards, we have been very good stewards, of the tax dollar, and we'll be able to present that to you next week in a little bit more concrete fashion. The credit hour, we are anticipating a decrease in tuition due to a decrease in enrollment. As I've chatted with many of you, all of you, there are a number of dynamics that will continue to show somewhat of enrollment decline that is being experienced throughout the entire country. We're no different than that, and so we're reflecting that in the budget. And then the non-credit rate, back to the formal, or what that was in prior to this past year, so an increase there that you can see both in non-credit tuition-funded and non-credit tuition non-funded classes. So some non-credit classes, we receive a reimbursement from the state, some that we do not, and then you can see the interest income and the other income. Netting out, if you will, $12 million increase. So this is, to date, the projected revenue, and it's considered very conservative. And again, as the tax rate comes in next week, we will be able to firm that up, as well as enrollment continues to change over the next week in terms, we continue to enroll students as the semester has not begun yet. So if I look at, then, the Fund 10, the expenditures there as it relates to our priorities. And within Fund 10 includes employee salary and benefits. Salary and benefits make up some 55%, you know, 55%, 57% of the budget. And so we are proposing a 4% adjustment across the board, netting quite some $6.5 million. I had mentioned before, we wanted an effort to look at those individuals who are not making $15 an hour. And as we look at that, that accounts for another $300,000 part to include within this budget. Specifically, we have about 340 individuals who are not at $15 an hour. By providing a 4% increase, 90 of them will get to that $15 an hour. So the other 250 or so will receive more than a 4% increase, but will get them to $15 an hour. Fund 10, I also want to, again, that is our operating budget. And to delineate, as I mentioned before, those SNIFer things, those things that were submitted, assessed, evaluated, and made decision on to move forward. And I'll just take some time to go through these. A cybersecurity program, fast-growing program. It was nonexistent two or three years ago. The college apprenticeship coordinator, we have more and more apprenticeship activities as a coordinator for the entire college for this. The horticulture program has an opportunity with their refurbished space to do more and more in the community around programs and services to offer. Dual-credit embedded faculty. As you know, dual-credit continues to grow. Our early college high schools are going to continue to grow. The significance of having embedded faculty, our faculty, if you will, in the high school is very important for that to happen. Welding and pipe fitting programs have been invested in, and we need personnel and operating dollars to continue to meet the demand of that program. An additional flight dispatcher to handle the aviation program up at Seattle. Much like horticulture, culinary has opportunity to serve more and more, and a culinary events coordinator to help do that. The electrician helper program is a new program in the need of operating equipment. NC3 construction certification, that is actually software. But the significance of NC3, it's a national organization, many community colleges belong to it. It is one that is really the guiding source for all registrations, certifications, licensers, and such. And so the partnership with them allows us to ensure that our curriculum in things like welding and pipe fitting, electricians, is up to date. We have done a great deal of work in our scheduling of classes and in the right sizing of our classrooms, if you've seen that, as we continue to update our classroom, and so faculty administration to ensure the development of the schedule, the scheduling of the courses, the development of the schedule, the placement of the courses and classes and such, the loading of faculty, and then the accountability for all that is ensured. And then the heavy equipment program is one which we had begun recently, and it would be in need of operating and equipment. So that's under advancing a lot of the academic programs. I do also want to mention that we were hiring, have approved the hiring of a number of faculty members, and again, we tried to be very, very fluid with that in the use of existing resources. We have vacancies and retirements, we're a big place, and therefore, we're allowed, we're able to really adjust the need of where our faculty resources need to go. And again, this was informed by the scheduling and facility utilization work to know what, we began looking at the schedule and the economies of the schedule, it better guides us as to how the, how different disciplines need to be resourced. The other piece of Fund 10 is advancing learning and learning support. We've spent a great deal of time in the principal work around high schools and our partnerships with high schools and universities. And to bring some standardization to that is now reared its head as being important, and we will have directors of educational partnerships on each of the campuses, specifically to deal with that load with the high schools and to provide, as a group, more consistency in how we interface with those high schools. TouchNet is an electronic invoicing, allows us the ease of access in using technology and credit cards and such for students and students to, students to pay their bills. Post-COVID, we need to ramp up, frankly, our advertising in a number of areas and a number of communities and underserved communities that we've not, to really get the message out of our affordability, our quality, and our convenience. And this is much in response to the competition. And so we will be in areas in local market TV stations where we had not been before, that's expensive space to be in. It's not just general casting and cable, and well as Target Mail and our, some of our, we will also use things like Trinity Metro to help advertise our, so some outside of home, if you will, advertising. Well, so this is a significant change for us in terms of approach, but we think it's necessary really to respond to the competition, but also really to bring the public back to light as to who we are and what we do. So then an increase, an increase in spending there.
Is this the campaign that was announced in May?
This is beyond that campaign. This is beyond the campaign, yes, this is beyond.
Dr. Giovanini, could you repeat the question, please? We couldn't hear it.
Oh, good.
No, I said, is that the campaign that was announced in May? And he said that this is beyond the campaign.
This is beyond the pitchback campaign that you saw.
Pitchback.
Thank you.
The event coordinator, academic events position is a couple of things, one of which is for this campus. This campus, as you know, is very nice, a lot of people like to be here. It tends to attract many, many more activities and always has than the other campuses. That's not to compare, that's just a reality. So we need to be able to have resources in order to meet that demand. The college access and community outreach coordinator, that is really a product, again, of the 3GAP around the student experience, to have more resources towards serving students and outreach and in the community. And then, those of you that have been with us a while know that we have had an ongoing activity and discussion around our human resources office that has been extremely under-resourced for a number of years. And we use some outside folks to help us with that, and we are now going to begin biting off part of that apple of the recommendations. This is still, this is, it might be, look like a big number, but it's still extremely conservative as it relates to the need that's over there.
Dr. Giovanini?
Yes.
I did not hear you articulate on the college communications position. Could you talk about that?
Sure. Okay, that's right, thank you. All right, you're paying attention, I skipped right over. So a lot of the activity that you see, or a lot of the items that you see here have been through collaboration. And one of the things that have come out loud and clear, and a lot of discussion with the campuses and the presidents, as well as overall within the college, as it relates to college communications. And so we're going to be doing pretty much more of an emphasis towards that, as well as the marketing, but really separating those two as well, the communications and marketing being very different things. So we're going to, we invested a few years ago in internal communications, and this will be much more for external communications. And again, this was bred out of the need from the college through various discussions. Advancing the capital program, we have a lot going on related to purchasing and help within the purchasing procurement office. And then we did receive an audit report related to IST security, and we're going to begin addressing the recommendations through that, and so there will be some support of close to half a million dollars there. So those are the Fund 10 expenditures through the various categories, as you can see. Fund 50, pretty much straightforward. Again, this is our debt service of $17.9 million for the $300 million that we issued last year at 1.7%. I want to call your attention that, you know, in a couple of years, we're probably doing the second issuance, and that may be as much as $30 million. When it's all said and done, when the title issuance is done, $825 million, if we do so, we will be looking at an increase of $50 to $60 million annually to fully issue to cover that debt, okay? And I think that's important for us to keep our eye on. Again, we had committed to not increasing a tax rate throughout our whole program. And so as you can see, we will have to continue to adjust our operating budget and what we dedicate to our INS and the debt service as time goes on. For this particular year, the Fund 40, the pay-as-you-go, we probably have close to a need of about $25 million, $24 to $25 million to transfer from the M&amp;O Fund 10 to this. This is so far the definitive list of projects that we have on the docket, that we have a good feeling that we're certainly going to have to do, and they total over $15 million. So again, these projects will come up throughout the year, so the due diligence that we've done to date, this is what we're pretty certain on as being able to, as being able to accomplish. I'm not going to read through all of those, and again, these are pay-as-you-go, capital improvements throughout the college, could be roofs, could be a whole bunch of different things. And so you have the list there of what that would be. And then Fund 90 is the actual bond campaign, the funds itself. And so for this year, we anticipate drawing down over $133 million worth of bond funds. And you can see the breakdown of that, very, from Northwest Campus to Southeast Campus, and then begin getting into mechanical, electrical plumbing and different types of projects related to the principal, principal work. So again, that's how we characterize the budget, Northwest, Southeast, bond funding, and then mechanical, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. And so we're staying consistent with those categories, and so you can begin to see as to how those dollars are going to be spent down and what categories that they intend to go in this next fiscal year. So that takes care of pretty much the budget as it relates to priorities, both process and priorities. I do want to touch upon the tax levy process, it's not an easy thing to understand. Alls I can say is that, once we receive the tax roll, the tax assessor, collector calculates the no-new revenue rate, which really reflects the rate that would raise the same amount of revenue if applied to properties that were taxed last year. In other words, it excludes new development, but holds people harmless for growth in their property values. This is what previously was known as the effective tax rate. Last year, the nomenclature began to change. So the effective tax rate, although it's calculated slightly different last year, it did exclude the debt service portion. We do have to pull out, obviously, the debt service portion separate from the M&amp;O. We expect to receive the no-new rate calculation again this weekend, and we'll share that with you next week at the work session. And again, the Board committed to the public to not raise the total tax rate revenue of .13017 per 100 when we passed the bond program. This was really then a commitment to absorb the shift in the tax rate from the O&M to debt service. So we're taken out of our own hide, if you will, where we would have spent this money operationally, we are, we have to carve out legally, we have to carve out what portion would go towards the debt service. So again, we started this last year in 2021 by carving out .0087, $17.9 million, out of the operations to cover this debt service. So what's also new, we are now required to publish a notice of a public hearing on the proposed tax rate, including how members of the Board voted, if it exceeded the NNR, and we don't know if that will be the case. As a result, we will adopt the proposed tax rate on the 19th and adopt the tax rate at the September board meeting. These are new rules, if you will. And so in layman's terms, they want boards to go on record how they voted and then ratify that. It has to be five days later, we'll probably likely go to the December board meeting. We did this last year, okay? So this is, it was new last year, but I did want to review it again. Also, beginning in January, we were required to post additional information on our website to include the no-new revenue rate, the voter-approved rate, the estimated funds for the, for the debt service, if you will, and the O&M funds, and the schedule of debt service as well. So I know that's a lot of verbiage, but I do want to just call your attention that there's a process to all this that is quite involved, and I try to keep it in layman's terms. We are pretty much doing exactly what we did last year, we want to stay committed to the .13017, and then we will do the appropriate posting, the appropriate, as the law requires, in terms of you adopting that and then ratifying that at a later, at a later time. So with that, I think I will stop. We have, coming up, if you will, the, we'll continue to look at some of the recommendations that have come in as it relates to the SNIFers and some other things, and putting, finally, putting together a final budget. We will share a balanced budget with you August 12th and look for your approval on August 19th and the tax rate levy on August 19th, then or perhaps later, as the law would require. So with that, I will stop. For any questions, comments, or discussions that you might like to have related to the funds that were presented, the process, the priorities, and specifically what some of those, some of those priorities are, and the movement forward on a 4% increase, obviously serving our, in serving our debt service as priorities in all of this. Thank you, Ms. Yalla.
Thank you, Dr. Giovanini. We appreciate the, all the work that went into this, the preparation that you and staff put into it, so thank you for that. We'll go ahead, anyone have any specific questions they would like to address?
I have a, one of the keys in our budget.
Does your microphone?
Yes, it is, but can you hear me? No. Well, one of the keys is enrollment. Of course, it went down. Oh, in the Fort Worth Press or something, the other day, I saw an ad from Tarleton, published by Tarleton College, saying, "Come back," something like that, enroll with us. Is part of our, quote, "campaign," end quote, pitch going to have things like that focusing on students coming back to our college? Of course, it might be too late now, but in the future?
So the, what's put in this budget is yet to take place, so that those efforts will be into the future. But I can talk a little bit about enrollment. We were off 7% to 8% last year, not as bad as you heard me say before from a lot of the country. We are off a little more this year. We are off a little more this year, and if I play it out, we may be off as much as 10%. Again, not too much different than the rest of the country. I've participated in some national things, and you hear a lot of themes. Last year was somewhat simple. You had one choice, to stay home. And you wanted to go to school, you stayed home at the school. This year, there are much more, many more factors involved. People have been out of work, that's a factor. Some people are back at work and making significantly more money than they were, and they're saying, "I'm good." You know, jobs that paid $12 an hour are paying $20 an hour in some places, and I know you see the news, you see that. And so, that is an issue. We still have anxiety over the pandemic, the virus. We have uncertainty in people's homes as it relates to childcare. We have some folks who have different circumstances, whether it be up or down, have not paid rent or not paid mortgage or not paid car payment, didn't have to, now they do. So, you have a lot of factors at play. We also have an issue with, again, not having a smooth transition of high school students to us, and that's a significant thing for us. Some of the high schools in the area just got out a week or so ago. So, on the bright side, as we look at our opportunity, we have data within our knowing that we have thousands of folks out there who've expressed interest in coming here. We've had thousands of folks who we haven't seen since 2020. So, there's an opportunity, we know who they are, to be able to reach those people, and that's the process that we're doing now.
So, are there going to be a plan to reach them?
Yes, and we're doing that now, but we're, but this advertising that I spoke to and the marketing is beyond what I'm talking, even talking about right now. So, we've had some, we've made up some significant ground the last couple of weeks. We still have a few weeks before classes begin, and if I was to, that, it's beginning to narrow more and more. So, as I look at it every day, right now, we would probably be down less than 10%, as I looked at it this afternoon. And as these efforts take hold, we maybe catch up even at a quicker pace. And so, we're very, very conservative by showing a decrease in tuition revenue of 10%. And so, I believe we'll probably be a little bit better than that. We also have opportunity in our eight-week courses to make those much more available, more of those available. So, again, we're somewhat behind the curve, if you will, as it relates to everything somewhat getting back to normal, and the, being able to transition high school students. In those lists that I talked about, you have thousands of students, that having the eight-week classes, we still have time in which to enroll students, to enroll students there. So, that's the download on enrollment in terms of the factors involved and how it looks today.
Dr. Giovinini, this is Teresa, off that question, the comment you just made around the enrollment, what are we, what is the, pretty much the national level, and where are we in that number? Are we in the, you know, close 25% or less? I mean, where, can you give us some of that, please?
You can look at it, yes. You can look at it different ways, and I don't look at numbers nationally, because it varies and, you know, I like a lot of my national colleagues, but somewhat turns into liar's poker at times, too. So, that's not a lot to pay attention to. If you were to look at today, what we have enrolled today to what we had enrolled at the end of last fall, it's about 22% to 23% down. But if I was look day-to-day, and I can do that, it's about a little less than 10% down. So, if we continue on the same pace that we are, because classes haven't started yet, we'd be about 10% down, maybe a little less. I'm hoping that it's even, that will narrow even more so with the efforts that are taking place over these couple of weeks, and some of the factors that I mentioned about, that are really somewhat different, being able to now get at high school students, the eight-week session and do something with that. Again, it's a full semester, it's not necessarily what we have first day of classes, it's at the end of the semester that makes a difference. So, from, so that's how I would assess it, you know, at this point. You can look at it from today to the, what would be at the end of the semester, that tells you a big, big number where you're down. But then, day-to-day is much less than that, you cut that just about in half of what we would be down. And then, again, hopefully, the efforts that we are engaging in will even reduce that more so. But the factors around enrollment are national issues, you hear the same thing from everybody.
Is that number that you gave me, the 22% to 23%, is that an average for all the campuses? Or is that, or so another, some of them may be higher or lower, is that correct?
Yeah, it can be, and that's, that can be a little misleading, too, because some of our students attend more than one campus, and so, that can vary from campus to campus, yes.
Dr. Giovinini, according to your marketing program, are you marketing at all on social media?
So, the answer is yes. Reg, if you want to take a stab at a little bit more than yes?
Okay, I'd love to hear it.
Reg is coming to the podium.
Yes, see your point, Trustee Wood. We depend heavily on some of the social media outlets to get to our student population, and even to your earlier point, Mr. Greenhill, we are marketing the fact that we're back in person with our coursework, so that's been part of the overall scheme. And then, of course, we always depend on the fact that we have low tuition, that's part of what we use, but Spotify as well, Trustee Wood is another vehicle we use that the younger generation tend to focus on. So, social media, those outlets, we do teasers even from our TCC social media site. So, yes, all that's part of what we're using heavily.
So, I'm glad Reg mentioned about being open, because two, about two or three weeks ago, based upon some of the feedback we're getting, it was clear in some parts of the community that they did not know we were open, or in fact, that we were going back face-to-face. And so, we immediately put that front and center on the webpage, it's the first thing you saw, if you clicked on and gave that much more attention. But that, again, was something, you know, maybe took, take for granted, because we did a few things that everyone heard or listened. And so, we've ramped up efforts there to make it folks very aware of we're back in business closer to normal.
Reg? Let me ask you another question. Are we, I don't, I'm not a branding person, but how, is there a strategy, data, to know what students are listening to or if they want to? Like, the webpage, I rarely go to the webpage, I guess they could go if they wanted to, but is there a strategy? Do you know, have you researched? Do you know what students in our community listen to or watch, or, oh, wow, TCC, do y'all do that?
Yes, we do that, and I like to think we do it better than most. So, the 800-pound gorilla, so the Dallas comparison, that's what people tend to use. So, you can choose what space to buy, and Dallas has chosen to buy news space. So, when you see the news on, and we were on Channel 5, actually, this morning, so we buy some of that.
I saw it.
But that's not where you reach who you want to come and enroll. That's, that's just your commitment to the, to the community, to the taxpayer, that you are in that space. But when I talk about the strategy that we've used, that Suzanne has used over the years, is to target those very places where we know those students are. We know a lot of them are non-traditional, you know, so we do veteran-facing things, so we go after those markets where we feel like they are. There's always room for improvement, so I don't, I don't suggest nothing different.
Reg, could you stay up there, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Just one question.
Can y'all hear me? Okay.
You could speak up just a little bit, please, Mr. Coy.
I don't know if they're hearing me through this or through that computer. Yeah.
There is mention of the required deliverables of posting the different notices on the website that are now, they'll be in second iteration. Would you let us know when that's posted, and could you send us a link?
Okay, okay. Sure will, because, and a lot of it is, most information, required information, if you scroll to the very bottom of our homepage, you'll see those links, legal, different things that are mandatory postings, but I'll make sure to do that, because Suzanne will remind me, so, all right.
Mr. Chancellor, could you get a little deeper into what college communications position is? College communications, that's, y'all talking to each other?
No. No, that's a specific effort for communications externally. So, a few years ago, we made more effort on the internal communications. As we particularly chatted with the presidents related to needs of the offices and needs of the campuses overall, what, one of the things that reared its head was around the communications and assistance with communications. So, things like activities and vents and speeches and different, you know, venue of item we may want to get out there to the community. And so, we do not have a dedicated resource for that, and more so, a consistent resource for that. Yeah, well, you know, when you make it a couple people's different jobs at each campus, the communication gets different, that's obvious, and what we want to ensure is a more of a one voice, one college perspective. And as we had the internal discussions, it became obvious that we needed to put a resource there towards that. Reg, I don't know if you want to give any more example of some of that work?
That's your point. You know, just take a little more, okay? I think you covered it. The other point would be to have more direct assistance from a communication standpoint for the presidents, to the point that the chancellor was making.
Does this include outreach to the community telling us what they want? Do the presidents or somebody else get?
That would be a different effort.
That's a different effort.
That's a different effort, yes.
Okay, all right. Do we have that effort?
Yeah, oh, sure.
Okay. And what bucket is that?
Lot of different buckets.
Lot of different buckets, okay.
So, we have advisory committees for every program, and they meet regularly.
Okay.
Every camp, every program at every campus has an advisory committee. So, that is direct connection with the community, if you will, that's probably one of our strongest as it relates to the programs that we offer. And we're in dialogue with our partners, and so, as it relates to the student, you know, the student services and student support services, and our partners are many, you know, their community agencies, their faith-based, their public schools, their universities, their chambers, there's.
Okay, thank you.
So, all of that, all of that, all that venue or that opportunity for venue helps, you know, provide us guidance.
And Dr. Giovinini, would you help me to get a little clarity on the flight dispatcher and the community outreach coordinator?
Sure. So, Zerina's not here, is she?
I'm sorry, Dr. Giovinini, could you repeat that question, please?
Can you do both of them, Alva?
It was, I was wanting more clarity on the flight dispatcher as well as the community outreach coordinator.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the flight dispatcher is linked to the pilot program, and we need flight dispatchers for when the students are flying the airplanes. And the, the students actually fly airplanes not only during the day, but also required to fly at night. So, we often have students meeting at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, so they can fly in the dark and so on. But they organize all of that flight that the students need to do, and they keep records of the time, all of that is required by the FAA. So, that's the flight dispatcher. On the other, the.
Alva, before you go to that one, Alva brings up a good point. The record-keeping documentation is significant in this. And a few years ago, we ran into a little issue with the FAA related to that, not that we did anything wrong, but there's a lot of, a lot of documentation that goes towards it. Also, if the student is a veteran and the VA is paying for it, that, you know, that's buying five mortgages every day in terms of what you're signing, okay? There's a lot of, there's a lot of record-keeping to that. And so, not only the flying, dispatch of the flying, but also the record-keeping, so it's not just about them being up in the air, there's, it's quite involved, so. Alva, the other one?
And what was the link with Seattle? You mentioned Seattle.
Center of Excellence that we created, we call it Seattle. But it's really the Irma Johnson Hadley Center at Alliance. Yes, sir. The other is, is on the, is it the CACO? It has to do with community outreach. So, we have a handful of, people think we have a lot of people working this piece, but we have about five individuals that work in the community, work with the high schools, and ensure that the students fill out their financial aid paperwork, answer questions about Tarrant County College, all of those pieces. We have a very exciting partnership with T3, which involves, as you well know, it involves Tarrant County College, it involves the public schools and the universities. And in fact, Dr. Coppola is exhausted, because he's been in meetings all day on that piece. But it does require additional support on the part of what we call CACO, it's this community outreach group, and that's what that position is. It's to support the T3.
Okay, that is, my flashback was when I was working for the college, we had a position, person in a position that was called community outreach, but it was really in reach, because they didn't do anything unless the people came to the campus.
No, they go to them. Yeah.
This person didn't, and they, and the counselors had to go to the campus, and once they came to the campus, then that person took over with them. And I was, so I was just trying to make sure that this, these were individuals that would actually go out and interface with the community, because that's what I would think that that meant, but it was not that way.
As Alva mentioned, this is our commitment to the T3 initiative as well, and that's six high schools within the Fort Worth ISD, and, you know, a few thousand students that are engaged in, some 60 navigators, counselors, if you will, that will be in the schools, and this is to ensure that transition.
It's important.
A person on our end that's a point person, working with those navigators and those students.
And I believe that's really important, because if you don't, counselors in public schools don't really have time to talk to all the students that they're in charge of, so to have somebody else that can come in and gather students together and present our programs, it becomes really important.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A general question, maybe, maybe there's some buckets in here for this, too, is, are we making progress on the, what I would call the barrier of, the registration process is very complicated, and we've heard a lot about eliminating this barrier, I know it's very difficult. Have we made some progress on that?
We are making progress, so there's a couple of things around barriers, one of which is identifying those we have that students have difficulty with. We've put resources, the foundation has put additional resources around that, so we've certainly spent more money in that space. So, that's one portion of barriers. The other, if you want to call it a barrier, is the, is the enrollment process.
Yeah.
And how students engage that, and that is an ongoing challenge, if you will, and it's certainly been a challenge this past year. That's why, when I said we have these lists of thousands, that, they have to be triaged, they have to be, you know, served, if you will. And so, where they may be in their individual journey may be different, and so, that's, you know, so what we're trying to do is efficiently and effectively address them through outreach and through. them through outreach and through the enrollment, you know, the enrollment process. So, we also have a significant effort within the principal work for the student experience. And that's, that's where we couch that, within the student experience. Recently, we have brought more resources to that particular and specific principal to, to, to work with the vice presidents at the campuses and the staff at the campuses to ensure a more, a smoother and a, in a process that is much more consistent across the district. And so, yeah, and I think we will make, we have made and will continue to make progress because students swirl and they go to different campuses. And if their experience isn't the same, that's not good.
Yeah.
And so, there's really a concerted effort there to ensure that. But we have to address it. We just can't, you know, hope for it. And so, the effort around the student experience is to bring those folks together that not really not had been brought together before to really address in a, in a consistent, one college approach. So, yeah, were we making progress? Yes, there's a long way to go though.
Long way to go. I, I had, I can't help but tell you that when I came in for this meeting, I saw an advisor sitting in a chair with several people in front of her, the student advisor. I thought that was a very good thing, so congratulations.
Chancellor, could, sort of going back to the question that Mr. Hornsby raised a minute ago, if, if I back off to the big picture of the community, Tarrant County, the community, not just looking at it from the college standpoint, about Tarrant County College's role in the scheme of things as it relates to education, the, from cradle to career, so to speak, are we doing everything we ought to be doing to help the transition all the way through the education process? I think T3, it's been mentioned a couple of times, Dr. LeBlanc mentioned it and you've mentioned it, I think that's a great process. And if I recall correctly, it has an emphasis on about eighth grade students.
Beginning at that point, yes.
At that point. Are we doing everything that we ought to be doing in this arena?
We can do more and we can infuse deeper, so some, some areas, so when I, so we want to talk about the, the whole big picture. Are we serving businesses as well as we could? We can get deeper into that. And we are, and you've seen some things that we're doing up, you all have seen some things we're doing in corporate services and we're going to share, share that with you as the months go on. That's, that's a new arena for us in a lot of ways. And so, we are infusing ourselves there. It's successful. It needs to, you know, to continue to mature and continue to be supported. I think the work that we're doing in the principal work around student experience, around integrated student success, that we are getting deeper into the, the things that actually do make a difference and doing so consistently. Our partners, we began, you know, when I first came here, was looking at the transfer agreements. And, well, first of all, some of our programs were in excess of, you know, 75 hours. That's, it should, it should not be that. So, programs are now, our degree programs are 60 and 64 hours. So, that, you might not sound like much, but all of a sudden, that gives a much more direction and a quicker end result for the student to complete a degree. Now, if that student takes those 60 and 64 hours and tries to transfer them, then they can't do that successfully, that's a problem. So, one of the things that we've, we've concentrated on in recent years was, I won't sign an articulation transfer agreement unless it's credit for credit into the degree program. So, you know, you're not worried, and I tell the four years very, very bluntly, you know, I'm, you know, I have a clientele to serve. It doesn't do me, it doesn't do them any good to short-change them. And so, we'll look for the best deals for our students and that's where we'll send our students. So, we've made some inroads there. You never know what happens at the, you know, on the receiving end, once they get there or not. So, I, and I think the next real concentrated effort, when we look at all these high school students in the early college, high school, or dual, or through T3, to systematize more how they're engaged and how they're brought through the process and stay with us. We, you know, we have, you know, about 14,000, 15,000 high school students with us. Many of them are taking dual credit courses, but they don't end up coming to us. Some of them, you know, a lot, many do go elsewhere and go to university. That's fine, there's nothing wrong with that. But I think we can do more to embed ourselves, to make that a more difficult question, or decision for them to make. I don't, where I think there's a huge, huge gap, and it just reared its head this afternoon. And I received the notices of a whole bunch of different federal programs that are coming down the road, about four or five of them, billions of dollars around industry clusters and helping certain, you know, regions, putting together proposals to help, you know, businesses and industries or create new industry clusters. And I had, I traded a couple messages with some people in the community right before this meeting. How is that going to come together in a discussion to where the college can play a significant role and really is, is really paramount to making something like that successful? And so, that's not what we necessarily might think of every day, what we do and what we are as a college. But that is, those are, and it's not just because of these dollars that are there. That has always been present in the community. Again, many people continue to look at us as Tarrant County Junior College. Go get your basics, go transfer. They don't see us playing a larger role, you know, in, in, in the community and to serve, and serve the community. So, when these opportunities arise, particularly now with a lot of this federal dollars, we, we are really, you know, critical to being competitive in those things. And so, there is, the college is hosting a meeting on Monday. We're just the hosting it, we're not conducting it, with the Federal Reserve Board and the county, the judge and, and, I always forget his name, over in Dallas.
Bob Kaplan.
Bob Kaplan. And in large part, it's going to be about, how is the region going to respond to the opportunity here with these federal dollars? And I'll tell you, when you get right down to it, it's going to be the community college, not only here, but in every community, that's going to be the vital, you know, vital asset to making these things happen. And so, and this is, you know, this, some communities are better than others. We in this community are not, we don't rally together in, in a way in which is real efficient and competitive for these things. Just, that, that's something certainly that, that we could be more engaged in and engage and involve with.
Well, it seems to me that this is, that the, Tarrant County College is in a unique position in the community to, to drive that process. And part of my thinking is, at, at budget time, it's the time to figure out what kind of resources we want to put in that direction. If not now, I would urge you, as we get into the year, and you can identify opportunities where we can expend our effort to, to be the, the bridge builder, for lack of a better term, or the facilitator, enabling force, whatever you want to describe. I, I think you can come back to the board and, and seek more money if that's needed. But I, I'm just convinced that the role that the college is playing can be much bigger in its impact on the total community. And we need to be sure we're putting adequate resources in that to, to seize that opportunity. It's not a grab for power, it's a help make the community more effective and operate more effectively.
So, we are planning a, a budget retreat with the board. And on that agenda, we'll be engaging a discussion in areas just as you're speaking of. And, and those, those, the, those opportunities, though, will give the college an opportunity, perhaps, to invest some significant resources in what folks might not, might think is not within the mission of the college, but it is. It is within the mission of the college and in the mission of colleges across the country. We just have not gone there. And so, this, this will be not, not, you know, not some of the same things that you see in terms of programs and services that we do. These will be getting in, in perhaps other arenas if the board wishes to engage in those spaces.
I think the board can redefine our, our, the specifics of our mission if, if we need to. Thank you.
Thank you for that dialogue. Those were some excellent points. Anyone else have some comments that they'd like to share or questions?
I just, I have one final comment. As I was driving over to Fort Worth from Arlington today, I haven't seen my husband all day because he's been working, but I found out that he wasn't actually working. He was at the bank this afternoon because he got a phone call from a scholarship recipient, a high school, graduating high school senior, who was awaiting a $500 check from a nonprofit that he's a board member for. And it was to help pay her tuition at TCC. So, he was frantic. He had just taken over a, a check signer role and he literally said, he said, "I don't want to be the reason that this student doesn't get to go to TCC." And I said, "Well, of course you wouldn't be the reason that she wasn't going to go to TCC." And he said, "Well, I don't know that for sure. I'm, I'm en route to run this over to the bursar's office." And I said, "Well, you could have talked to me, I probably could have taken it for you." But I think that that speaks to, I know that we're doing a lot to remind students and families or communities that are connected to potential students that TCC is open again for business, but it's the rest of us, you know, I, I pulled into the parking lot and sent a text message to a treasurer for a group that I know owes a couple of scholarship checks and said, "Have I failed to sign something for a student going to TCC?" I think it's just that we are still, as a community, responding to everything that is going on around us. And I challenge some of the creative communication strategies to include reaching out to groups who support those potential students, to remind them that we're back open in-person for business and that in fact, we never were closed for business, but that this is still a fantastic, amazing option for our community members. I mean, when I look at this graphic, this is just, it's, it's overwhelming and I think that we should be spreading this to anybody who can connect with a potential student about the opportunity and the fact that it's here waiting for them. And I will go home and make sure that I have signed a couple of checks tonight so that I also am not the reason that a student doesn't enroll here at TCC.
Thank you, and I appreciate those remarks. And, and, and having some of these discussions nationally, you know, what everyone's coming to the, to the understanding is, just because you're back open, you think it's just going to happen and it's not. And there will be a transition back in. So, this will be a difficult semester in, in a lot of ways. And so, I appreciate your, your comments because it's a good lesson for the college to hear that just because we're here doesn't mean it's back. And what are, you know, to, to triage, what are the, the items that may fall through the cracks? And so, I appreciate those, those comments in a larger scale, even a larger scale than your particular example. But that's the second one I heard this week about a foundation not cutting the check.
Because we haven't been in person.
Yeah.
Well, since we're kind of on this community thing, I just want to ask a question. Is there a standard presentation that individuals like myself that would have an opportunity to be in front of groups of people to present about the college and, in a succinct way where it doesn't take an hour, but 10 to 15 minutes to present maybe specific programs, the certificate programs or those short-term programs or those things like that, as well as those other things, so that each one of us could have a copy of it? And if we had the opportunity to go, each one of us would have the same presentation? We'd know exactly what to say and how that was, how we were presenting the school based on what the school is doing.
Yes, we can do that. We can do that for you.
Oh, I think your video about what would you do without us is a very good one that you've shown several times. Have you seen that one? You ought to see that one, but it, it's, that's one of them. It's, it's really good.
What we can do, we can strategize around an, an inventory of resources to provide for you and, and give a full, like, a little orientation into them and so you are, you know, equipped and can make the judgment what you may want to use when. And so, we can cer, we can certainly do that.
Thank you for those comments. Those are excellent. I think it'd be great for all of us to have some sort of talking points. It would be a consistent message across the board because we all certainly serve in other capacities besides on this board and we can reach out to other organizations. So, those are some good, good points. You know, to the point that Mr. Barr and I believe that Mr. Hornsby and I believe also Mr. Greenhill brought up, Dr. Giovinini, around, you know, some reaching out and making sure that we're doing everything we can to, to, to connect with our potential students. There was some cost savings that we've talked about throughout this past year that we were able to save as a result of not, you know, having folks in buildings and things like that. So, I, I really hope that we could maybe look at those areas and see where we could continue to do some of those things, to continue to experience some cost savings and maybe we could utilize those funds in, in a way that would help us in further nurturing the, the college mission. So, I'm just, I'm going to throw that out there as a consideration. But one other question I have for you about the budget is on, when you were talking about the summary of projected revenue under the credit hour tuition and you were just talking about the percentage of students that we're, we're down as far as enrollment. So, what does this number reflect? The 56 million that we had for '21 versus the 21 million, I'm sorry, 51 million of '22, what does that, what does that number reflect for, for enrollment?
Numbers-wise?
Well, you said we were down 22 to 23%.
Right.
So, what is that number reflecting right now? The percentage being about what?
The, if, if I were to go apples to apples and project, it would be about 10%.
Okay, but we're really, realistically, we're 22 to 23 right now, but this one is more of a 10% number?
The, as you look at the, the tuition, credit hour tuition, we're reducing it about $7 million. And if you, if you were to look at that overall, that's about, you know, what percentage that might be there? From 50, what we adopted in '21 was 58. So.
I, I'm just, what I guess I'm trying to find.
I know if you're asking about numbers of students, if you're asking about numbers of students?
Yeah, because what I'm asking, if this number, this 56 million number that we had, 58 million in 2021, we had projected a 56, and then we had 2022, we have a $51 million preliminary budget, and I know that's a decrease. I guess what I'm asking is, if you're saying that the 22, we're down right now, 22 to 23%, is this number reflecting a 22 to 23% down?
No.
As far as enrollment, or is it just a 10% down?
It's, it's, it's less than 20, it's less than 22, 23%. It's less than that.
Okay. It's less than that, okay.
Yeah, and, and next week, or even tomorrow, I could give you a different number.
Okay.
It's, it's really a 10% down from the current year forecast, okay?
Okay, that's fine. That's what I was trying to get at, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that number could change.
It will change. It changes every day to the, to the better. I'm, is, again, so as I try to look at it apples to apples, I'm guessing about 10 in, in actually the last few days, it looks like it may be less than 10. But again, I could tell you something different Monday. That's just the way it is.
No, that's fine. Just, just so we have, just we have in our, in our minds, because you're saying that we're down 22%, but yet what, what we're projecting, that's what I'm, I'm just trying to see where, where we are. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments that they'd like to share? Does anyone else have any questions or comments that they'd like to share? This has been a really good dialogue.
Good afternoon. I don't know why, I'm not seeing everybody as they're speaking, but that's okay. This is Glenn Morris, and I've loved the conversation that I've been hearing. And I just, I had a couple of additional comments that I was excited every time when I was watching the NBA playoffs that I heard a TCC advertisement. So I was really happy to see that, and I thought they were very relevant. So thanks for that. Also, I was wondering if we're doing anything in terms of employee reorientation or reentrenchment for employees as they return to campus? Is it going to be a total readjustment to working in a, you know, institutional environment? And I'm hoping that we'll do some extended efforts toward reorienting that toward employees. Also, I know we put some new systems in place. And I'm hoping that we'll do some training live with people as they come back to campus with those efforts. And I personally think we should make a big deal. If we're coming back to campus and reopening, we should make a big deal of it. It should be like a festival. And so instead of just, oh, well, we're coming back to campus. I think if we get excited and our faculty and staff are excited and we share that excitement across the community and we're there to help people, instead of expecting everybody to do it with technology, I think we'll get some good touches. I know that there are a lot of people out there who have survived this past year, but they've not really thrived and they really need that human nurturing. So I'm hoping that we will make an extended effort to have that kind of one-on-one or that people touch to our reopening of the campus. And I'm not saying that we're not. I'm just suggesting that. Because I'm like everybody else. I've been sequestered at home, and I probably not even own relevant social media, you know? And I know you all know what that means. I'm over here just surfing stuff that feels good, not what I need to be to be informed. But I just think if we highlight the human element that our faculty and staff will bring and the big difference that they will make, I think it'll make a tremendous importance, a tremendous difference. So, thank you.
Dr. Morrison, I think that is a fabulous idea. And I would get behind you 100% if you want to do any type of grand opening or reopening or whatever y'all come up with. I think that's a fabulous idea.
Well, thanks.
Yes, thank you for the suggestions, Dr. Morrison. That's right, we need to celebrate, much to be celebrated.
And at the same time, we need to celebrate, I'll be in my mask, maybe even my gloves, and I'll be wearing my unvaccinated sign. And I'll be recommending that everybody else get the vaccination. Because over here, we're waiting for the booster. The day the booster's ready, we'll be ready too. So I just think we need to put all of that in place. And like, we have back-to-school for the elementary. We need to do that for college. I'm just saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Anyone else have any comments that they'd like to share, feedback? Thank you, Dr. Giovanini. Any closing comments that you might have?
No, and thank you, thank the staff. This is a lot of work to go through, you know, it's looked at in a summary way. But there's probably more due diligence, more strategic due diligence done this year and all the years that I've been here. And a lot has to do with how we have structured our work and with the principal work and really being more focused around, you know, serving student and serving each other. So hats off to the, to the staff for all the work that's done. And I appreciate the board's interest and support over the last few months in putting this together. And hopefully, we've given you a good picture to date and of what we're looking at. And again, I'd be happy to take or answer any questions or today or any other time as we work through our proposal next week and then the adoption after that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that, and thank you again to staff. This has been a huge coordination and it's been a collaboration as well. We appreciate all the feedback from everyone in the comments. So unless we have any other closing comments, I'll think we can go ahead and adjourn. Does anyone? Would anyone like to pose that we adjourn?
I'll move that.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, by Dr. Morrison and second by Ms. Wood. So we will adjourn until our next meeting, which will be on the 12th. We will see you then. Thank y'all very much for your time, and thank you, Dr. Giovanini.
Thank you all.
Have a great afternoon. Bye-bye.
All righty, bye-bye.